Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Booton Township Board of Education held in the purpose of transacting appropriate board business in compliance with Chapter 231 laws of 1975. The notice that this meeting was advertised in the Morris County Daily Record. Copies of the agenda of this meeting were appropriately posted and made available to the public.
Mrs. Fordham.
President.
Mr. Brandon.
Here.
Mrs. Cabana. Mr. Chen.
Here.
Mr. Eaton.
Here.
Mrs. Hermy.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. LeVar.
Here.
Mrs. McBride.
Here.
Also President Dr. Angelo, Superintendent Principal, we have a form.
Now, thank you, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you and welcome. Uh, the first thing on our agenda is a presentation, a demographic study presentation by Dr. Richard Grip of Statistical Forecasting LLC. And welcome, and I'll give you the floor.
Okay, David, thank you very much for having me. I'm gonna swing around this way, that's where the remote is. So it's always a pleasure to come back, and it's been about six years since I've been here. It's about right, 2015? Tonight's presentation will be about fifteen minutes, maybe twenty tops, and then we'll go to the board for questions, we'll have questions at the end. So just a quick, brief introduction of our company. What we do is this kind of work, it's called school demography. It's a niche field, there's not many of us that do this, I always tell parents if they got a son or daughter in mathematics, please haven't talked to me afterwards, because we need more people in this field, there's only about a hundred of us in the country. So it's a real demand, and we do mostly our work in the New York, New Jersey metropolitan area, but we actually go down as far, we do a lot of work in the Arlington, Virginia area, right outside of DC and a few other county districts in Virginia. We have more than two hundred districts in this state alone, and we are the consultant for the New York City Public Schools for the last fifteen, sixteen years. We do all their projections, million-plus students, lots of different issues, as you can imagine, very different than here. So I'm the executive director of the firm, I have a doctor from Rutgers, I saw someone with a Rutgers sticker out there, so I'm very excited to see that. Uh, from the Graduate School of Ed in Ed Stats and Measurement, most of us wind up working for the ETS, which is Educational Testing Service, in this particular program, but I wanted something more hands-on, and I was actually a schoolteacher at Bridgeport, Raritan, for about ten years in physics and statistics, back in the early to mid-nineties. So I still like to publish, this is like my passion, people hear me talk about this, I love talking about this field, and I testify in court, actually, a lot, as some districts in the state want to divorce from each other, it really happens in send-receives, that's when I get called in to look at racial impact and things like that. So anyway, when most people look at a demographic study, what do they think of first? The first thing, the only thing most people think of is how many kids we're gonna have in the school in a few years, okay? And it's way more than that. But this is the highlights of the, of the study, and I did project for a five-year period, but the first question most people will say, well, can't you project that more, maybe ten or fifteen years, so we know what's going on? But the problem is, as we look out further into the future, it's very hard to predict the number of kids that are gonna be born in the out-years. And for a city like New York, we do that, but for a community as small as yours, it's very difficult and very unreliable. So we only do a five-year projection, and that's the only thing that the NJDOE will take from us anyhow. All the things we look at is the community's population trends, demographic characteristics such as socioeconomic status indicators, race, things like that, age structure, which we'll later be talking about, birth counts, fertility rates. Uh, Mr. Murray was nice enough to give me some data on the enrollment trends of resident students from Booton Township who are receiving aid in lieu of transportation to attend private schools. So it gives us some data on how many students are actually living here but attending private schools. We also looked at the buildings, this building's capacity with respect to the current and projected enrollment, to see if you have surplus seating or unhoused students, which is a fancy word for shortage of seats. And the last thing I looked at was research new housing starts in the township. Now, there's not many, but I'll talk about that in a little bit. So this is Booton Township in historical times and the future. So everything for the line of this line is from the census up through 2020. Twenty twenty data, by the way, is incredibly limited at this point. We have some counts, we have racial breakouts, but that's about it. The pandemic has really changed the rollout of when we expected to get a lot of this data. But right now, you're sitting at just under forty-four hundred people, and this, this data to the right is from an agency called the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, that's a projection for 2030 and for 2040. However, I should tell you that these values are likely to change, because NJTPA based out on the 2010 census. So now that the 2020 counts are out, it takes them about two years to readjust their future projections. But in any event, they're projecting a slight increase in the next twenty years. Alright, so this is just a profile of who you are as a community. This is an interesting statistic, I'll share with you in a moment. You're about eighty-three percent white, Asian Hispanics are the second-largest race of type. But in 2020, what's happened is you have a decrease in white population and increase in Asian Hispanic population. The white population in 2010 was eighty-nine percent. Is that rare, or is that, you know, this is actually happening all across America. By the year 2045, I just read this the other day, the expectation is that there'll be a majority-minority in the country, which means that the white population will no longer be the majority population. The median age here is very high. You don't generate too many kids when your median age is forty-nine, that much higher than the state median. Very small foreign-born population compared to the state, ten percent as opposed to twenty-three. Two biggest sources are from Pakistan and China. The socioeconomic status here is very, very high, okay, I don't even have to tell you that. Very highly educated people, incomes over forty, almost fifty thousand dollars more than the state median. Not many housing units here, and they're mostly all attached, single-family homes, about sixteen hundred. Ten percent are renter-occupied, again, way below the state. Median value of an owner-occupied unit is six hundred and forty-six thousand. Again, if you didn't take statistics, there is a difference between a median and a mean. The median is the fiftieth percentile, which means half the data points are above that value and half are below. So here's a little map, just showing the township, with the school right here, it's where we are tonight. So districts enrollment trends. We always collect the historical enrollments on the same day, roughly, every year, and that's October the fifteenth, which is when the school district sends their NJSMART data down to Trenton. So as of October fifteenth, this past October, just under four hundred students here in the building. Enrollments have been declining over the last decade, I'm sure that you're definitely aware of that. Go back ten years, we looked at the last ten years, you were four hundred eighty-three students. So in the last decade, you've lost about ninety students. And to project the enrollments going forward, we use a method called the cohort survival ratio method, to project five years out. And I'll explain that in a moment. That's the NJDOE-approved methodology. So this is just showing simply the enrollment over time, but this is the interesting thing right here. It's been declining, but it could be this year, might be the first year that you start changing that trend. Stabilization, just a tiny bit of a gain of nine students. So what is this cohort survival ratio method? I kinda go through this quick, so I don't lose people and have them fall asleep on me, but really what we do is we compute what's called a grade progression ratio, or a survival ratio, of students from one grade to the next, historically. So I'll give you a simple example here to illustrate. So if you have a hundred first graders in the 2021 year, and then they're gonna advance into this year as second graders, and you only get ninety-five, so you've lost five along the way. The survival ratio is ninety-five over a hundred, which is point nine five. So we compute these ratios for every grade progression, K to one, O to seven to eight, and a special one, which is birth to kindergarten, which is a five-year gap. But, um, so you have in this school, in your district, actually, nine ratios from birth to kindergarten up to seven to eight. If the values are above one, you're gaining students due to inward migration. If they're below, it's outward migration. So when I looked at your ratios and took an average in the last five years, that's typical, seven of those nine ratios were above one, meaning that you're gaining students via inward migration, okay? People are moving into the community. That's how we can tell. We don't know exactly all the things that's causing this value to go above one. I don't know all those particulars why people are moving in, could be economy, it could be family that's nearby, we don't know. But the, the, the end result is you have inward vibration. So we take these average ratios for each of the grades, and we assume that the ratios' progressions are gonna continue into the future for every of the next, all the next five years. So we multiply those ratios times your most current enrollments to get the future enrollments. And that's, that's really it in a nutshell. You have a phenomenon here called negative kindergarten replacement. It's happened each of the last nine years, and the values have ranged between six and forty students per year. And simply all it is, it's when the number of entering kindergarten students is less than the eighth-grade students from the prior year that are graduating. So let me give you an example, just so you can see this. If you had a hundred eighth graders graduating, to ma, to keep your enrollment steady, never mind what's going on in the other grades in between, you would need a hundred kindergarten students to enter into the district. Well, you haven't been matching that, so you might get, say, seventy kindergarten students, and that would be a loss of minus thirty right out of the gate. And that's what happens when you don't have enough children entering from the early ages. So what has happened that's interesting, here's how I can tell the tide is turning. The last two years, the value of that negative kindergarten replacement has declined, because you had larger entering kindergarten classes and smaller eighth-grade classes. So what's happening is, the, the smaller cohorts that you've had from here for the last decade, they're finally moving out. They're moving out of the system, and they're being replaced by bigger cohorts down below to close this gap. And this is the values of the kindergarten replacement over time. You can see how small it's been the last two years. That's how I knew right away, when I saw that, something is changing here. And this is a really interesting graph. This is showing the same values that you saw in the last one, this is the kindergarten replacement in gray. In blue is the enrollment change from one year to the next. So let me show you an easy example. Uh, let's take a look at this one right here. So in this case, you lost forty students in that year due to kindergarten replacement, but your enrollment change was only a loss of seventeen, because you have so much inward migration, you're actually counterbalancing, offsetting some of that, of the negative kindergarten replacement. This is the, that happened every single year except for one, which was this year, twenty-twenty, the year prior, I should say, twenty-twenty-one, first year of the pandemic, because in that particular case, you might have lost students due to outward migration for homeschooling, going to private schools. I saw this in many school districts across the country, so many outward migration, people just not coming because they didn't wanna do remote learning, things like that. So that's the only, um, one that did not fit that pattern. So we used births to project kindergarten students five years later. We looked at the data from the two thousand seven year to the twenty-twenty year, twenty-twenty-one is not available as of yet. Births have increased the last four years. That is another indicator of a change in trend. You had thirty-eight births in twenty-twenty. Doesn't sound like much, it isn't, but that's the most that you had in the township since two thousand four. Although the report only goes back to two thousand seven, I worked with you guys, like I said, in two thousand fifteen, I went back and I said, well, let's see how this birth data matches up compared to the last report. It's the highest it's been in, uh, let's see, sixteen years. So there's the births over time. It's kind of a ugly-looking graph, but if you, if you look at it close enough, you can see, in this period right here, you know, you're kind of in this stable window, and all of a sudden, you're starting to take off a little bit. And that's in the last four years. Eventually, those kids get here five years later. So this just shows you the births in the township in the, in birth year over here, how many students come five years later, and the birth-to-kindergarten survival ratio. Remember I told you there's one special ratio we looked at from birth to kindergarten, it's a five-year gap? These values are so much higher than one. That's why I put them in red, so you can see that. What does that mean? It means that you're gaining so many children that were born in other places besides Booton Township. So they're not, they're moving in with kids in tow, under the age of five, and then they get here for kindergarten. That's the way it works here. I mean, I can see it. Just because your birth count's so low, doesn't mean that you don't have any kids here, they're coming in from other directions. And this is telling me why you don't have too many people having kids here, is because you are loaded, this is twenty-ten, this is an age-sex diagram, by the way. Shows the percentages of males and females, males in orange, females in green, for each of the age classes. This is not normal, okay? What you see here is a high percentage of people in their forties and fifties in twenty-ten. Okay, they're not having too many kids, okay, certainly not right now. I'm done. Um, so this scenario right here, the twenties and thirties would be the people who generate the most amount of kids, they're not here, okay? They can't afford to live here. Taxes are high, house prices are high, so on and so forth. Let's advance this, advance this to the next most recent time we have now, it's not twenty-twenty, because the data's not there yet. We have something called the twenty-fifteen to nineteen ACS, it's a American Community Survey, it's another data, um, data point from the census, but it only looks at one percent samples from the last five years of this, but it's good enough to see what's going on. Back here, the biggest cohorts in the males were forty-five to forty-nine and fifty to fifty-four. For females, it was forty-five to forty-nine. In a perfect weird world, no one, or not too many people died, if we advance it almost ten years, you would expect the biggest cohort to be the next group up. Okay, it's almost like that for the females, they're the fifty to fifty-four bunch. But down here, it's the fifteen to nineteen for males. I don't put too much stake in this, because this is a very small sample, that's why it looks kind of strange compared to the other graph. When we get the twenty-twenty data, it'll be more interesting, but you still don't have a lot of people in their twenties and thirties. The state of New Jersey, if I was to show you what that looks like, all this would be filled in, right here. So as I mentioned earlier, we did take a look at non-public school enrollments. There's really not that many children who are attending private schools. And again, this is, these are students who are receiving aid in lieu of transportation. So there could be more, of course. But what you can see is, in the last couple of years, there's definitely been a trend upwards of more children attending private school. And this goes from the sixteen-seventeen year to twenty-one-twenty-two. So I broke it out by elementary minimum of the total, as we see, trajectory upwards. So if we take the number of public school students in this building, take out the pre-K students, and we add that to the non-public students that I just showed you in the last slide, we get what's called the universe of students that are in Booton Township. You're right, it doesn't include people who homeschool. So this is the amount of students that you have in the township, and you can see it's been declining, but it did go up in the last year. What's interesting is that the public percentage has been declining over time, from about ninety-six percent to about ninety-one and a half percent. So I contacted planning and zoning to find out about potential new housing in the township, and there's many reasons in the past why you haven't had too much housing here. Number one is that, uh, I forgot what year it was, but most, some parts of the township, you have a minimum of six-acre zoning, which really does not lead itself to a lot of new developments, with that kind of land for minimum lot size. The other thing is, you're also partly in the Highlands Preservation Area, so there's another more restrictions about building. However, there are two potential developments here. One is on Towerville Road, I drove on this on the way in here, um, which is thirty-eight units of their market rate in affordable apartments. And the other is on North Main Street, Note Road, sixty affordable apartments. That one has not been approved, I believe they need to get sewer to get that thing to work. So there's the possibility, almost a hundred units, and sixty affordable plus eight affordable on this other one, that's a lot of affordable units. They generate more children than a market-rate unit does. So I estimated, based upon what we call the state average multipliers from Rutgers University, how many children could come from those housing units, and I estimated about thirty. And I put it red, it's a rough estimate, because I did not have the bedroom distributions of those developments, because a three-bedroom unit generates a lot more than a one-bedroom unit. So I, I use some averages of ones and twos and threes and c, but this is what I think it would probably be. And I gave two sets of enrollment projections. One, where I'm going to modify the, the enrollment projections to account for housing, I call it the modified projection. And the first projection is a baseline, assuming that none of these ever happen, and we'll talk about that in a moment. So here's your home sales over time, the last twenty-six years, from nineteen ninety-four to twenty-twenty. What's interesting, this is common, you see a lot of home sale activity in the late nineties, mid-two thousands, and then things just crashed. And you probably remember this as the banking crisis, the mortgage crisis, um, that's what happens, okay? You're not alone, this is, this is, this is to every town I've seen in basically the state. But you can see that in the last six or seven years, it's starting to recover. And it's almost at the point where it's actually almost exceeding where you were prior to the housing market crash and banking crisis. When I see this in a community like yours, with a lot of home sales, what I think of right away, we're not getting empty nesters buying these homes, okay? It's gonna be families with kids. So this is another indicator, right here, you've got a strong resale market, you've got people moving in, again, inward migration, it's another variable you can see that's working toward rising enrollment. So my GIS analyst took all the sales from the last six years and plugged them into a map by, then aggregating them by a census block. A census block is the smallest geography from the US Census. So where are the greatest number of sales in the township for home sales? All in the southern part of the township, which is in dark blue. The reporter has a bunch of other maps that he created, but, um, for sake of time, I'm only showing this one. So there's the projections. I mentioned that there's a baseline projection, which does not account for the new housing, assuming it does not happen. The orange one is showing the adjustments for the new housing developments. And in either case, you're seeing that you're, we're expecting a rise in enrollment for the next five years, okay? But what I can tell, let's say the housing does not happen, at the end of five years, your enrollment would be four-eighths. I think that's, if I'm not mistaken, that's roughly around the value you were ten years ago. So it's not like something that you wouldn't be able to handle, because you've already had this back in two thousand twelve. I'm sure it was much higher than even that in the mid-two thousands. And the last thing we do is we look at what's called a capacity analysis, this is the last slide. And what is going to be, is the values here, this capacity of a building is really something from what we call the long-range facility plan. It's not a hard and fast number of this building's capacity, it's something that can change based upon how you're using the building. In other words, the board has a policy, I'm sure, that says how many children you can educate in a classroom. If you want to increase class sizes, we can then raise the capacity of this building. It's not a hard and fast number. If you want to convert more general ed classrooms to special ed, which cannot have the same capacity, you can then lower the capacity of the building, alright? So keep that in mind. And this is from, I can't remember what year this was, maybe twenty-nineteen or twenty-twenty. So if you're using the building differently than when your architect computed that number, you know, the capacity could be different. But right now, if we compare the current enrollment to the capacity, you have a large surplus of seating here. Due to the projection of increasing enrollment, I'm projecting that surplus of seats to decline, but you'll still have a surplus. And that, by the way, is the bigger number of the two, with the housing included. So, I have to talk about COVID. We're all in masks here, right? So can't just forget about it. It has had a tremendous effect on enrollments across the country. Had meetings with some of my colleagues around the country, we all have these sob stories to talk about, because as a demographer, it's had a major impact on how we project, because who could possibly project a pandemic in the projections and the effects of that? So the, the effects are really varied across the country. Where I live in Vermont, after years of declining enrollment, we actually had a bump in many of the towns, as much as fifteen percent. We found that a lot of people from the New York, New Jersey, Boston metro areas are moving there to their second homes. We just don't know if they're staying, and it's, it's really an interesting situation, because are people going to return? The biggest districts across the country have had massive declines. New York City, where I work for, has had a very, very big decline in enrollment. So that's the question. None of us know, we can't get the insights ahead of people, are people going to return back to their primary homes, or are they gonna stay in their second home or some home they purchased in a rural area? I don't know. So as a summary for tonight, while enrollments have declined over the last decade, I'm anticipating a change in trend. And that's due to the fact that we're projecting increasing enrollment for the next five years due to the following reasons. They all kind of align together. The increasing birth rate we talked about, the inward vibration of route students where seven of your nine average survival ratios were above one, ninety-eight new housing units that are potential and possibly more, if set as a settlement agreement in place happens to bring in more developments, and a strong home resale market, which has been effective in the last five or six years. So with that, I will turn it back to Mr. Board President to direct questions.
I have a question. Thank you. Can you go back a couple of slides to the, uh, just the amount of students that you expected to be here for the school?
That one?
Sure. Either one, I'll do the next. It seems to me that you're adding a hundred students roughly, based on those figures, which in a four-year period versus when we lost a hundred students over a ten-year period. It seems like a quick jump to me. And I'm just wondering if you have a range of, I guess, accuracy?
So the standard in our field is that we go with a one percent error rate per year. So on a district like yours, it's very challenging, because the one percent on four hundred students for it, for instance, is only four. So if you go out five years, that would be twenty students. It's not really meant for districts, that, that rule around was really meant for larger districts, say, three to four thousand students. Because you're so small, the variability's gonna be larger, there's no question in my mind. However, um, we're doing the best we can with that, with the error rates that I mentioned, you know, going forward. But yeah, one of the thing that, well, the hard thing to take on your district is the birth-to-kindergarten ratios. And that's because you have such variability, right? I'll show you where. If you look at these numbers, they're all over the place. So we use something, use, we use something just for that one particular grade progression, we use something called grade progression differences, where instead of looking at the ratio, we actually look at the difference between these values and assume an average difference going forward with that amount, because these ratios would really blow up the amount of kindergarten students going forward, we use that going forward.
Do you think it would be more accurate if we got the statistics from twenty-twenty?
No, twenty-twenty census is more for the township, I mean, I, look, with the pandemic, I'm concerned about the integrity of the data from twenty-something census, to be honest with you, a lot of us do. So all it's gonna tell us is, well, it's gonna tell you maybe going back to here, uh, you know, you might get some more data on the age distribution of these folks, but, you know, it's not going to help at our level, which is the school district. It's more for the municipal level. Sure.
So I had a question on inward migration, you had said, um, I think like not seven of the nine, or eight of the nine?
Yeah. Seven of the nine. Right there.
There was one chart where we bumped into the positive.
Oh, kindergarten replacement.
There, yeah. So I was wondering, the net effect in the blue of the enrollment change, I mean, are you seeing that as something that's like people coming back from private schools, people doing a big negative net? Like, I was just wondering how, because of the effects during COVID, people going to private school.
There's definitely people returning that's caused the bump. However, you didn't have much to offset here in the beginning, at the beginning of it. So you only gained fifteen students in inward migration here, right? If you take a look down here, you gained twenty-three, this is the difference between these two. So you actually gained more here, but it's still negative. So you, you gotta keep it all in context of, you know, how small that negative kindergarten replacement was to start out with.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand the impact of positive change, like, are there gonna, yeah?
This isn't much. Yeah, I, I'm working with districts where the inward migration this year due to return of students would have been, let's say if they had a minus twenty-six, they might have had a plus fifty-six, you know, some, but again, you're, you're smaller, so it's all relative, but the effect was much more pronounced in bigger districts, yes. But the effect was much more pronounced in bigger districts, yes. And it really mattered on what kind of education we provided in the 2021 year. If you were completely remote or if you had a hybrid program or some school districts were in-person the whole time. It really, that had a big impact.
So I know in your last slide, you mentioned COVID is changing things. But for other rural districts in the area around here, are you also looking and seeing the same thing with the employment?
Really varies. No, so I, I've done a lot of work in, and we just talked about this before, I'm being a lot in Morris County. I'm doing a lot of work in Salem County, which is the other extreme of New Jersey. It's much more rural, this is, I think, more suburban. But I am seeing the same effects, you know, that we had a lot of people that left last year, but then there's some people returning. But here's the kicker, we really thought that more people would return than did. And so where I thought, and this was my thought, is that this year was an anomaly, the 2021 year, and that we would have the same inward migration patterns that we've had prior to the pandemic. That has not happened. So the question I have, and many of us do, is what's the long-term effect of COVID going to be with student migration patterns? Because some parents that, you know, for instance, whatever reason, they just thought, well, you know what? I don't want to live here anymore. I don't need to live here anymore because I can work remotely. I've got a kid in DC who's doing the same thing, you know, so she, she doesn't have to be in an office. And I think that's going to be the same kind of, same kind of thing that we have to somehow figure out going forward. We just don't have enough data yet. It's only year two.
So we're expecting to see more positive net enrollment change.
Yeah, so I think if we extended this out going into the future, this, this number may, may be almost zero in the next couple of years. And then you continue to get the gain, of course, that's what I mentioned.
Any other questions?
All the time. I'd like to thank you very much. That's a very informative presentation. I enjoyed the last one.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Chris, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. We'll head back off.
Well, I'm feeling happy right now, just so you're working up. It's fun stuff. Remember, get your son, your daughter some coffee. Always looking for someone to hire. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, that, that brings us to Board Business Motions 1 and 2. May I make a motion, please? Is there a second? Is there any questions, comments, or discussion? And if not, the question is on the adoption of Board Business Motions 1 and 2. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. And any abstentions? Thank you. And Board of Directors, this is one. That brings us to administrative reports. As far as the business administrator, Secretary of Report, Dr. Murray.
Just briefly, this is the next step in budget process. We're still continuing to meet administratively. Administrators are also meeting with teachers just to finalize some things. But you've seen the presentation before, I just want to go briefly. You have it here, it'll be posted on the website tomorrow. And I just want to hit the highlights. Most of the slides are pretty much the same. I just wanted to go through it as, as another step in, in the process. So the one thing, information we did find out now that we didn't know at the last meeting was that the governor has extended the deadline for, I'm sorry, his, his presentation on the budget. It's going to be in-person now, so we won't know state aid figures until at least March 10.
When do we usually?
Usually the end of February, mid, end of February. So our speculation is because it's in-person, they want to do an in-person meeting. So statutorily, two days after the budget presentation on the state's budget, then release state aid. So we're a little bit late, but they haven't extended our deadline of when we need to approve it and get it to the county super. So again, that's statutory as well, the, the date that you need legislation to change it or to change that date. So those are the timelines. Again, we'll approve the budget at the March 16 meeting. We'll have plenty of meetings with the finance committee in between. We met prior to this meeting tonight, and we'll have further meeting. Again, the next slide, what I'll refer to is the, is the slide. I'm not, I'm not going to really go through all these because I did that before. Budgetary goals, again, some of the highlights are continuing on our reply algebra and enrichment, and continuing our in-house M.D. program and our L.L.D. program, which has saved a tremendous amount of money. Not only that, to provide the education for these special education students rather than sending them out. Considerations in the budget development, tax levy will be at our 2% increase, which again, the tax levy's about 92% of the budget. And then the other items are smaller portions of the budget. Other things to consider are salary increases, our DDA agreement, and insurance, things like that, and so forth. Budget assumptions, I've told you this before, that the, the larger of the classes are now graduating at the high school. We have smaller being replaced by smaller classes. So we'll see a drop in about 30 students. Again, you look at that figure of about 456,000, that, that's actually a good thing for us because it's mitigating some of the other costs that will be going up, whether it's health benefits, fixed costs, and so-called salary increases. If we didn't have that much of a drop, we would have to be looking elsewhere than cuts if we hadn't, we'd lost state aid. Again, that's, that's a good thing that, that happens, that we won't have to do any reductions to staff to make up those increases and the increases. So that's a good thing for us. Again, status quo on state aid funding, we won't know until the budget is released from the state. The next slide, six. Again, we've, over the years, done a number of cost containment measures to save money. We're looking at other co-ops constantly, collective bidding and so forth. And then some of the shared services we've done over the years to save money. The enrollment on slide seven, 84, the board has. You can see our current enrollment, as Dr. Griff had said, back in October, we had 393, we're at 391. Now, independent of his, I'm projecting, my projections were around 410, he was projecting around 413. And I have to tell you, the last demographic study we had, we were hitting the mark pretty close on all of the projections. So I was anticipating this would be any different. So again, that trend has, has, we think, is reversing. And then I always give you on slide eight, a pretty much what we showed over the last 11 years, what we're planning for for next year's budget. Staffing-wise, a number nine based on, again, it's not based on enrollment, it's based on the program, programmatic, that needs, the additional guidance counts for counselor, and then one additional aid due to programming needs in the M.D. program. As far as facility projects on slide 10, summer of 2022. If you remember, in the current year's budget, we had withdrawn 450,000 for capital reserve to a roof last summer. Because of the supply chain and everything else, didn't happen because of the shop for the, for broken roof. But we'll use that money that's in the current year's budget, projecting that we'll withdraw another 600,000. So we'll be able to do a million dollars worth of roofs this summer, provided that supply chain is, you know, again, it's not halted. But all indications are, we, you'll see a resolution on the agenda tonight to approve the design for the roof. Again, a lot of behind-the-scenes information gathering for that. So hopefully, we'll get that approved and then get a state number and we can move forward over the summer. There are contractors within our co-op that have been stockpiling something. So if we can keep that process moving along, we may be able to select a contractor that has insulation that other contractors can't handle. So timing's critical. So that's pretty much it. And then, you know, over the past few years, you've seen that in my presentations. So it's not a surprise that we've retired yet in last May. Looking forward to some future planning for referendum items. At a glance, when you hear 2% tax levy increase, it's really on the revenue. So you'll see that new money from one year to the next is about 280,000 again. And all your other costs are going up. If nothing else changes, your costs go $300,000 to $400,000. You're only going up 280 here. So I mean, if you have to make cuts elsewhere to balance that out, again, you have that Mount Lakes reduction, which helps hit any of these other costs. State aid history, I'd like to leave the 2009 in it because we see where we were many years ago. And we're just starting to come back up. Hopefully, budgeting for status quo at the 706,000 level from current year. And then the last slide is pretty much, if you look at budgeting over the last 10 years, and it's not a budget that has a lot of fat, a lot of padding in there, you can see that there've been very minor increases over the year. Again, that dehooked all our costs, salary increases and so forth. So the 21, 22, that includes the 450, 450,000, so for capital reserve. That and why that number jumped up a little bit higher, because it includes funds in there that we're withdrawing from our own accounts to do a roof. So that's pretty much it. As I said, we continue to meet administratively, finance committee. And at March 16 meeting, we'll be coming back to the board for approval to get it down to the county superintendent. Again, other presentations like this, we'll just try to keep them brief. The board will get a full line item when we get to that point.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I'm sure this is on. Going on the roof, you can hear me or not? Is this on or off? I don't think it's off. Now it's on. Now it's on. Was it not before? Okay. Shouldn't that go up here when I'm looking? What is on, so that's why I can question that. Okay, thank you. That brings us to the superintensive court, Dr. Angelolo.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Couple of informational items. On January 10th, Governor Murphy signed a new law into effect that requires schools to notify parents after each time they conduct a drill in school, whether it be a fire drill or a security drill. And that notification must be made by the end of the day that the drill is conducted. It's a very short notification, it's something to be attacked on, the drill is conducted today. Know that it was not emergent, it was a drill. These are standard operating procedures. So we have a store, a very short standardized email that we'll send out after drills that satisfies that new requirement. Quite frankly, this was handed down because some districts were conducting drills where they were not necessarily age-appropriate. I'm sure if you look on NJ.com, you can read more about it. By that, I mean that if you were in a smaller setting like this, it was P to eight, they were conducting security drills that were lockdown drills, for example, in nature, where they had pretend active shooters with pretend guns and blood and students and staff lying down in precarious positions on the ground that were potentially injured. So because of a folly of a few, now every school across the state is required to put out notification to this effect and to let parents know that we are conducting appropriate drills in the building and don't subscribe to that type of behavior for drills. That's why. We have made our school community aware that pursuant to the governor's announcement last Monday, masks in our schools will be optional as of March 7. We are still all across the state awaiting guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education and the New Jersey Department of Health as to what this means for contact tracing and quarantining. And we will send out information to our parents and staff when we learn more. We are scheduling ad hoc Public Relations and Wellness Committee meetings after the long weekend. I will keep the board updated as we move agenda items forward on the progress of both of those committees. And finally, please make sure for your committees, if you check your emails, we have a number of board committee meetings scheduled for the week, first week of March in program, curriculum, personnel, policy, and I know financial meetings. All right, that concludes our report. Thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you. And you all had a chance to look at the nurses' report and the 10th's report. So that brings us to commendations. Back to Dr. Angelolo.
Commendations this evening. A hearty thanks to Mrs. Olga Corona, who was with us until mid-month last month in her custodial position with summer cleaning and substituting for other custodial staff members when needed, and daily cleaning and sanitizing during the pandemic. Mrs. Corona is retired and she will be sorely missed here. To our 7th and 8th grade SOAR students, who learned a lot about the UN Sustainable Development Goals, international issues and relations, and the art of productive communication in the annual Model UN experience last week. Congratulations to all of our delegates, their instructor, Mrs. Link, and to Aditya Saha and Ethan Panzic on their winning position paper. Congratulations to our boys and girls basketball teams and their coaches, Mr. Turner, Mrs. Cabetti, and Mrs. Gaffney on their very successful seasons this past winter. Many thanks to Hearts and Hands LLC for delivering professional development to our teaching staff on January 17. Very worthwhile topics were explored and our staff was very engaged. To our Wall of Fame students for December. In pre-K, Kate Hager and Trey Yarmula. In kindergarten, Mirabel Azanari, Josephine Cohen, and Angela Diaria, along with Thomas Sanjanari. In first grade, Nolan Barak Swern, Ella Beermeister, Zeke Hamel, and Declan McAndrew. In second grade, Jane Prattinter and Amber Wu. In third grade, Miriam Gulag, Beau Clark, Raya Emmes, Olivia McAndrew, and Olivia Seminario. For our January students, in pre-K, to Jacob Gonzalez and Sawyer Lee. In kindergarten, to Teagan Adalot and Ethan Balgobin, along with Willa Hansen and Mason McIntier. In first grade, Kyle Casella, Caleb D'Souza, Emily Mills, John O'Leary, and Carolyn Tapakis, and also Vaya Vanderstraten. And in third grade, Jake Dobby, Logan Ismail, Ariel Murillo, Anthony Sterlingo, and Ilah Toto. For our Falcons of the Month, for December. In fifth grade, Camila Mena. In sixth grade, Megan Pang. In seventh grade, Kenneth Wedstone. And in eighth grade, Mikey LaPorte. And for our Falcons of the Month in January. In fifth grade, Joey Barba. In sixth grade, Evelyn Zanino. In seventh grade, Sheila Vasquez. And in eighth grade, Tyler Wills. And those are our commendations.
Great, thank you, Dr. Angelolo. That brings us to Correspondents 1 and 2, which you all had a chance to look at. And that also brings us to open section number one. The first public comment period will be limited to agenda items only. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and day-to-day operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chain command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record, and all comments are limited to five minutes. Would anyone from the panel wish to adjust board on agenda items at this time? Thank you. That brings us to the liaison reports, starting with the Education Foundation.
Hey, hi, everyone. So four kids, winter session was, they delayed the session and reduced it to six weeks, but it was kicked off on February 7 with 150 children registered for after-school enrichment programs, some new classes like chess. They're very excited and a new mix of classes and a new mix of vendors. The 19th Annual Golf Outing is set for May 9 at Blood Fair Country Club at Crystal Springs. It's a new location, it's back after nearly 18 months. And the early bird discount, which is $25 off per golfer, ends February 22. Volleyball is off to a great start. We have 38 participants this year at 6, 7, and 8. Eighth grade, we have, we have two coaches and parent volunteer helping out. It's just, it's a lot of fun, co-ed, boys and girls playing together. And they will participate in a tournament in Denville in early March. The Spring Musical, the cast has been announced and rehearsals are set to start next week. It's March 25, 6, and 7, Rosen Jr. We have like an exciting class, lots of fifth and sixth graders participating, even some of them got leads. So we're, we're just really excited to be back. The annual bowling fundraiser event is March 6 at Luden Lanes. And the registration is open currently and lanes are filling up. And the annual read-a-thon also just kicked off. And the contest is underway with increased prizes and recognition for the students. Winners will be announced on March 3 during lunch period, so students will see their peers be awarded.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to Home and School Association.
Sure. So I wanted to thank the HSA for welcoming my very first HSA meeting on February 1st. So we talked about what just happened, Valentine's Day pretzel to pull up. Where each student's got a pretzel on Valentine's Day. I know that was well received by everybody, so I wanted to thank the HSA for that. They had talked about the talent show. It is postponed. They are looking to schedule it later in the year, but that's still to be determined. So we'll look for a date, so I'll inform everybody when we think of what to do for that. Other report dates, there is a Shake Chef fundraiser on March 3 coming up. There was just one on February 3. Also, the school play from March 23 through March 26. And they are also looking to have a family fun night that is in New York. There's some planning. Details will come out once they finalize planning for that.
Thank you. And that brings us to Morris County School Boards Association.
Meeting is next week, and its focus is special education.
Yes, thank you. I think that particular one might be online at this particular time. Okay, thank you. New Jersey School Boards Association.
The annual delegate assembly is made to work here, and get verified to a person.
It's always fun, it's a nice one-ride to Hamilton Township if it's live, on a Saturday morning.
It's May 14th, it's Saturday.
Thank you. Township Committee.
Yes, couple of events happening. The Easter egg hunt is scheduled for Saturday, April 9th, with a rain date of Good Friday, April 15th, at Leonard Carr at 10:00 a.m. sharp. Summer camp registration for Boot Township Recreation Camp, it's six weeks, July 5th through August 12th, at $125 per week. Week of July 5th through the 8th, with no camp on the 4th, is $100 for that week. Fun Fridays will be held at RBA Fields, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. till 12:00, held at RBS. Out-of-town residents may sign up for $150 per week, and there's other information on the form. And any questions, people can reach out to Kristin Groenfeld at recdirector@boot township.com. Earth Day Cleanup, Saturday, April 23rd, is the Rockaway River Cleanup, 10:00 a.m. Meet at 31 Rockaway Drive. Bring your gloves and bags, and volunteers are needed to help participate in cleaning up the Rockaway River and other areas in Boot Township. And the last one is the... Do you have a question?
No, you said with 4/23 in Western.
For the Earth Day is on 4/23, yes. And then the last item is the Boot Township Rep Township Live Garage Sale, which is going to be Saturday, May 7th, with a rain date of May 14, 8:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. Sign up and participate for only $20. And a map of all the participating houses will be available at Town Hall and posted on various websites. Submit the registration form and payment to the municipal building no later than Friday, April 29th. And that's all.
Great, thank you. And Mountain Lakes.
Good evening. Lots of wonderful things going on at the high school. The performing arts program there continues to be really strong, and former RBS student Aaron Queso finished third in the whole state in the band to make All-State Band, so congratulations to Aaron. Joining him on the North Jersey Band are Olivia Manchin and Casey Fan. And then the high school also had four students make the North Jersey Region Honor Choir, and that's Rowan Zolner, Arunima Paul, Aaron Queso, again, and Leela Amorossary. So according to the presentation that I heard, it's pretty rare to have that many students make North Region honors and All-States, so congratulations to all of them. The high school also put on three plays this fall, so if you think about still kind of being a COVID year, the fact that the high school is able to put on three plays is really phenomenal. And I looked at some of the seniors, I only recognized one who I think went to RBS, and that's Casey Kovar. So apologize if there were others, but again, that was the only name I really recognized. On the college prep scene, not to worry, there are tons of resources, and the high school just added another new resource called College Guidance Network. Every week, there are opportunities to attend seminars, have Q and A with admission counselors from colleges and universities around the nation, workshops, on-demand videos. There are also practice standardized tests you can sit in on, and any other things. On the sports update, both the boys and girls swim teams have advanced to the sectional finals with wins over Demeris or Ramsey, respectively. The girls' basketball team recently beat Sussex Tech. Sussex Tech Tech moved to 10 and 9, so they are going to win each season. And then the girls' indoor track team just finished second at the sectional meet, the boys finished fifth, and some of their athletes are moving on to the state track. So lots going on here. That's it for my interview.
Great, thank you. And Educational Services Commission, I attended a representative assembly meeting on January 12th. At that meeting, they meet twice a year, the representative assembly, and in January, they set their annual rates for the 22, 23 year, so that's what the representative assembly did. Their Board of Directors also met on the 12th, but that just consisted of routine business. They also had a meeting on February 9th, which I attended, of their Board of Directors, and the major thing that came out of that meeting was the Board of Directors authorized the administration to develop a contract for the sale of a building that they owned in Rockaway. They used to run two special needs schools, and enrollment declined over the several years, so they consolidated both the two schools into one school over in Morris Township called the Central Park School, and they are, in the last couple of years, attempting to sell this building, so. And that concludes my report there. And Boot Township Green Team.
So I apologize for not including the idea, we have not had an official meeting yet. Our first meeting will be next Friday, but I'm going to pass it to Lee first, so I can shoot a little more detail than what's, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, no problem. So I was former Green Team, and I've been working with Doug on this, but so during the pandemic, it was just quiet. We had several members who were instrumental in the Green Team lead move out of state, and so it's been quiet. But on January 24th, they reappointed. I've been working with Doug Cabana back in January to try to find some citizen representatives that would like to join, plus they have, they have their health department and recycling coordinator, and the town administrator all are on the Boot Township Green Team. So we found the representatives, I'm happy to say, it's actually Lisa Schreger and Nicole Kovar and Eve Fusco. So they're teachers, but this is not an RBS Green Team, not to be confused with that, this is separate, for Boot Township to figure out what we can do within the community to be more environmentally friendly. And so the first meeting is next Friday, 3:00 p.m. If anybody in town is interested, or, you know, they can feel free to reach out.
Is it Friday, sorry, is it Friday?
Friday, the 20th.
It's 25th.
20, the 25th.
Oh, and next Friday.
25th, 3:00 p.m. Yeah, and so we're going to start by just taking a look at what we've done in the past and what we want to do in the future.
Great, thank you very much. And moving on to our agenda items, the next item on our agenda is Facilities Transportation Motion Number One. May I have a motion, please? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the question is on the adoption of facilities, motion number one. Mrs. Roy. Mrs. Florida.
Yes.
Mr. Brander. Yes. Mrs. Cabana.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Hermy.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. LaVar.
Yes.
Mr. McBride.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. The next items on the agenda are finance motions one through 10. May I have a motion, please? Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? And if not, the question is on the adoption of finance motions one through 10. This looks like an all-in-favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Any abstentions? That brings us to personnel motions, one through six. May I have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll second.
Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, if not, the question is on the adoption of personnel motions one through six. This will be a roll call. Mr. Florida.
Yes.
Mr. Brander.
Yes.
Mrs. Cabana.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Hermy.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. LaVar.
Yes.
Mr. McBride.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda are program motions one and two. May I have a motion, please? Is there a second?
No second.
Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, if not, the question is on the adoption of program motions one through two. This looks like an all-in-favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Any abstentions? No, there exists two policy, technology, there are no motions, so we are at open session number two. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and day-to-day operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chain command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record, and all comments are limited to five minutes. Would anyone from the public wish to address the board on any matter?
Hi.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. 408539, Rockaway Valley Road. Just had two quick questions with regard to baseball. I noticed that there is no assistant coach, just wondering about the budget item, or is it, is it possible to find anyone to volunteer for that?
We have not been able to find anyone, Mrs., and so you are it. Please forward page or resume.
Okay. And then also, to pull it off topic, with regard to the S.R. funds, can someone tell me if all of the funds that were allocated by Jersey for our Boot Township, have they been received? I'm excited.
Mr. Hermit, would that be something you want to...
So there are a couple of different S.R. funds. There's S.R. two, S.R. three. S.R. three has not been approved, still in the process, has to go to state and so forth. S.R. two funds, we actually have approved those, and we are putting in for reimbursements for some of the ones we've already spent. That's over a two-year period, the S.R. three is over a three-year period. So there's still time to encumber and spend those funds.
Is there any plan for any summer classes for any of the students using some of those funds?
Those are things that we're in discussions with right now, our Education Foundation on, so there is a possibility, and we're looking at a host of other programs too, that, you know, as we start to finalize things, we'll make our parents and our community more aware of that for things during the year.
And as you may know, there are a lot of restrictions on the percentages that we can use and what we can use it for, there's a lot of different areas for S.R. two funds, mental health, staff development, so not all the money that's allotted is for any particular area.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address the board on any matter?
I have just a quick question. Liz Ward in 101 Rockaway Valley Road, and I was just wondering about the school schedule for next year. I know it was approved. When will that be announced to the public? Or has it been?
No, no, it would not be announced until the board approves it. Now, if the board has approved it, if we don't put it out tomorrow, then it will be out when we return from the long weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And would anyone else from the public wish to address the board on any matter? Okay, if not, thank you very much. That brings us to old business. Is there any old business to come before the board? Is there any new business to come before the board? And if not, may I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss issues that warrant confidentiality as permitted in the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, laws of 1975. These matters may or may not be made public when the board reconvenes, they will be made public when the confidentiality of the subject is no longer warranted. We have two topics. One is negotiations with the Boot Township Education Association. The second is negotiations regarding the Mountain Lakes Agreement. And there will be no board action taken over the return, other than adjourning, and with that. Is there anything else to add to that before we move ahead? Oh, yeah, absolutely. And with that, may I have a motion? May I have that motion?
I have a motion to go into a second session.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And with that, thank you all for coming. We're only going to return the meeting when we return from executive session, otherwise, if you leave, thank you for coming. Welcome back. We just returned from our executive session, and this time, I'd like to entertain a motion